The Commission meeting to order. This is Thursday, April 25th, and the time is 6:30. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Henme.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Wax.
Here.
Vice Chair Eldram is absent. And Chair Gitzoni.
Here.
You have a forum.
Okay, we have a lot of people here tonight. We start off with the opportunity for a public comment from any members of the public who may be here wanting to comment on things that are in the purview of the planning commission, but are not on the agenda for this evening. Is there anybody here who wants to speak? Okay. So no public comment. The next item is approval of action minutes from the last meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments on this? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, as written.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry. On the motion to approve the March meaning minutes made by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Wax. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent. And Chair Gitzoni.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. And the next item is the Director's Report. If you would.
Thank you, Chair. Chad Smalley, Community Development Director, with your report for this month, a little recap of the City Council's actions since we last met. On April 2nd, the council received annual reports from a number of advisory committees and made various appointments to committees, including appointing Carol Johnson to this commission. Her term will start May 1st, and I think she's in the audience. If you want to wave. Great, thank you. On April 16th, the council held a public hearing to update the development impact fees. This happens annually, and those development impact fees increased by 0.63% in accordance with the ordinance. The council also awarded a series of community promotions grants and visual arts grants, including expansion of the visual arts grants program to allow the installation of eight different pieces of art across the city. The city council also held the first reading to repeal the all-electric reach code, partly as a result of litigation that stemmed from a similar ordinance in Berkeley. And the first reading of the tobacco retailer license ordinance, which I've mentioned in prior reports, and then finally amended the 2024 budget. Events since we've last met, on April 9th, the bike share program was expanded with 55 additional bikes and three new stations across the city. On April 21st, we held the annual shoreline cleanup. It was well-attended, over 80 participants. And just a note, in the future, our annual committee recruitment is underway for advisory committees. Those applications are due by May 28th at 5:00 PM, and the appointments will be made by the city council on June 18th. And you can find information on that on the city's website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad.
Mr. Chair, we have some questions.
Oh, yes.
Regarding the reach codes and that repeal, did the city council indicate bringing back a code that would not be subject to litigation or waiting to see what happens in the Berkeley lawsuit?
There would, no, there was little to no discussion on the matter.
I have the question about the same thing. So what, can you explain what is the, what is the situation, the issue?
I might, I might ask if Christie, yeah, thank you, Christie, if you might, our special counsel who's joining online, I neglected to mention that, that she's joining us remotely today. Hi, Christie.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Chad. Yeah, I'm happy to take that question. So there was a lawsuit filed against the city of Berkeley a couple of years ago now. Actually, it has taken a while to get to this point, and Berkeley had a similar reach code to the cities, requiring all-electric for new construction. And ultimately, the Ninth Circuit struck down Berkeley's reach code indicating that federal law preempts regulation of gas appliances in the same way that we have proposed, and Berkeley proposed to regulate them. So most cities that are in our position have begun the process of repealing those reach codes. As Chad noted, our city just did that at its last meeting. As to whether there are additional or different ways that we could look at, you know, regulating natural gas, or encouraging or incentivizing all-electric appliances, you know, that's still, I think, on staff's mind. I know that it's on Nancy's mind, and it looks like, though, that the law is going the way of incentivizing those types of, incentivizing all-electric construction rather than precluding natural gas. Hopefully, that answers your question.
So, thank you for the explanation. So basically, what you're saying is that cities will no longer be able to mandate the all-electric requirement.
That's correct. So as the law stands now with the Ninth Circuit's ruling, the city cannot force or mandate all-electric construction.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, then we move on to ex parte communications and conflicts of interest. Do we have any of either? I have a conflict of interest on the Total Wine &amp; More retail store. My employer has adverse relationship or adverse matter with one of the people in the application, so I will be recusing myself from that and leaving the room. I believe we'll need to select a vice chair for the moment, but I think we do that then. Is that correct? Okay. Then we move on to the first item, which is the UC Berkeley, four students from the, who participated in the Master Urban Design, Advanced Urban Design Studio, presenting ideas. This looks very interesting, so I guess we can begin.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Amit Price Patel. He is a practitioner with Dialogue, which is a design studio based in Vancouver, as well as it has offices in the Bay Area. Both Amit and Mona reached out to Charlie last July with the idea that they wanted to pick Emeryville as their case study for their urban studio class in UC Berkeley. After that, in August, myself, Chad, and Charlie talked with all the students, giving them an overview of our land use regulations in Emeryville. And after that, they went away, and they've come up with presentations. And I did have an opportunity, they invited me, to review their presentations along with some other professionals in the field. So with that, I will hand it over to Amit and Mona and Paul Port.
Thank you very much, Miro. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Amit Price Patel, as Miro mentioned. I'm very pleased to be here with my colleague Mona and Paul, who is a PhD candidate at Berkeley, as well as with several students. As you'll see in the hallway there, we have set up an exhibition of all of the students' work. Tonight, we'll give, well, there'll be several of the students will be presenting their work. We've selected a few of them. So first, I'll talk about the topic of the studio. The topic was scarcity and abundance. When we're designing cities, when we're building cities, when we're making decisions about cities, we often are working with a set of assumptions about what's going to be available, what the future is likely going to look like. But if you think about, what if there's scarcity of water? What if there's scarcity of available land? What if there's scarcity of energy? Or things are happening with the political system or social system? How do you respond to that? How do you plan for that? And how do you create a state of abundance? That's what we were trying to explore with our urban design studio, using design as a tool to address these really complex and important topics. So I'll hand it over to Mona to talk more about how scarcity and abundance specifically applies in Emeryville.
And of course, you already know so much about Emeryville, but one of the reasons, multiple reasons, we chose Emeryville as a site for our students. Its strategic location is proximity to Oakland, San Francisco, Berkeley, just like it creates like a really unique context that you can look at and explore the ways that the region can grow. Also, its proximity to educational hubs, working hubs, cultural hubs, like create that kind of a unique mix of mixed-use development that we really wanted our students to take on, as well as looking at the housing shortage. We also asked them to look at the interesting history, the industrial history, and how it has transformed itself, and what a unique opportunity for adaptive reuse. It provides, as well as a lot of the challenges from like the liquefaction factors to sea level rise. So we really wanted each of them to identify a specific scarcity, and then through a design intervention, come up with a solution that would create abundance and provide opportunities that would take that scarcity and make it into an abundance. So you'll see a few of those students that will look at that, but we really wanted them to explore the neighborhood, explore this, you know, the context of Emeryville. We kept calling it licking the neighborhood, to just like go in there and really get to understand the neighborhood, get to understand the history, but also the demographic, and what are the challenges that the city faces today, but what are the aspirations for the future? So we looked at designing a future for the city 2050. So that's the 2050 vision, what it can be.
And just for a bit of context, this is one of three semester-long studios or design workshops that the students had to take for their masters in urban design at UC Berkeley, where we very much encouraged them to go out there, to field work, talk to people, ask questions, and figure out what issues and what design strategies they want to propose from the ground up, so to speak, which is why the array of projects that you'll see out there and now in the students' presentations are really very diverse, from questions of climate change, adaptation, and sea level rise, to questions of inequality and job creation. And on that note.
On that note, we'll have the first student, Nupur, come down.
The students will limit their presentation. Hi, my name is Nupur. I'm thrilled to be here, so thank you for inviting me. My project is about the question of jobs and employment in Emeryville. It's called Big and Small, because the project intervenes at two scales, one the big of manufacturing and the small of small local businesses. My project started with this question of who works in Emeryville and where do they come from? And there's a very striking statistic, 92.5% of people who live in Emeryville are not employed in Emeryville, and only 2% of people actually live and work in Emeryville. So the question was, does the city not have jobs for the people who live here, or does it not have housing for the people who have jobs here? And this was also, I found, tied to kind of educational attainment of the workers, and most of the jobs in Emeryville were privileging a certain type of worker who was college-educated and had a bachelor's degree. But this was inconsistent with what my image of the city came up when I spoke to the people who painted all these beautiful murals across the city. And I wanted to kind of identify this scarcity, that Emeryville had a lack of an equitable distribution of jobs, both in terms of the types of jobs that it had, and also what kind of workers could get those jobs. In this process of figuring out where to intervene, I spoke to a lot of the artists that make up Emeryville and their visions of it, and that's how I started investigating where the jobs were located in Emeryville. And I found an interesting pattern, that both the jobs for the resident workers and the local labor. Sorry. It's not moving. Sorry. Yeah. So both the jobs for the resident workers and the local labor force were kind of concentrated along the Amtrak corridor in Emeryville, so I chose that as a site of intervention. I was looking at creating a synergy between development around the Amtrak station, collaborating with the private sector, and taking advantage of the fact that Emeryville is so close to UC Berkeley. The first thread of manufacturing came from the idea that Emeryville has been this manufacturing shoreline, a working waterfront, and that's consistent even today when you walk in that part of the city. It's got a different vibe, and it's got a different kind of building footprint that makes it so. And I also found a really interesting entrepreneurial spirit in terms of the small businesses that Emeryville supports. For being such a small city, it has an incredibly diverse set and kind of positioning to encourage local businesses. So when I looked at manufacturing, because the aim was to create more types of jobs, I looked at manufacturing that was labor-intensive and would employ a lot of people, and then I picked the types of manufacturing that Emeryville already has a history of, like companies doing that type of manufacturing. I proposed a framework for collaboration between the city, the private sector, residents, and the employees of Emeryville, where the manufacturing companies that came in could upscale the workers and hire people who didn't necessarily have college degrees, and it would also provide housing for these people along the kind of Amtrak corridor. The abundance that I imagine in Emeryville is for it to be a place where workers come from different kind of backgrounds, college-educated, different races, and have opportunities to be employed and stay in the city. The project is essentially an infill of manufacturing and small businesses and housing along the Amtrak corridor on underutilized sites, while also creating new public space and giving the rail corridor a landscaped edge. It would create about 1,040 new jobs and encourage space for 25 new small businesses. And the idea was that by keeping both of these together, you would create an interesting kind of identity along the Amtrak corridor. It would also provide housing for these workers along, above the manufacturing units and upskilling units, and kind of creating a way or a framework for all of them to benefit by being close to each other. This is a drawing on top of one of the pictures that I took in Emeryville, where I think when you're walking along the Amtrak corridor, you can kind of, you densify it, create housing, you can see a manufacturing building, you also make small businesses visible. And the diversity that I was aiming to create would be both industry-wide and also worker-classwide, where it would create different types of workers and different types of jobs, and give those people the option to live close to where they work. The way that I imagined this playing out in the everyday lives of the people who live here would be that by densifying the corridor and creating public space around the station, you could make small businesses visible, and then you would have this experience of seeing like manufacturing buildings over the bridge, and that it could essentially be a place where you can work in the day and step out for a beer in the same city. The takeaway that I want to leave you with is that the project was about reviving manufacturing by combining it with the fabric of small businesses along the Amtrak corridor, proposing new partnerships to upscale workers for greater employment equity, by densifying the rail corridor to provide housing options for the new workers who would move to Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yizhu, and I'm today to discuss Emeryville 2100. Thanks for the opportunity. For Emeryville, a small city facing big issues like sea level rise, it's important to use our future investment in infrastructure to solve multiple issues at once. My plan takes us from a scarcity of permeability, which means not enough places for water to go, towards a abundance of resilience, giving us lots of ways to withstand and bounce back from environmental changes. Emeryville's shoreline has transformed over time and reflecting the evolving history of the city, from a natural haven to an industrial hub. Today, our shoreline, since the 1970s, faces two main issues. Despite its proximity to water, the city's shoreline is hard-edged and inaccessible because of the IAT creating a barrier. There are valuable natural areas, but they are cut off from the rest of the city. By 2100, Emeryville anticipates a substantial sea level rise of up to seven feet, with an additional three feet during the 50-year surge tides. This rise will lead to flooding of city blocks along the railroad on both sides. It is a significant challenge, but also an opportunity to create a resilient and sustainable long-term vision for Emeryville. My responsive design strategies include embracing the reuse of Emeryville's flooded area for ruin-themed programs such as ecotourism, shielding the city with a living levee to slow storm surges and also absorb floodwaters, and adapting by creating a resilient and adaptable urban canal district for entertainment. All of these strategies are closely integrated with the Tomasco Creek watershed, ensuring they work in harmony with the local ecosystem and contribute to its overall health and This is my master plan. It showcases the implementation of the three strategies along Emeryville's waterfront, each highlighting distinct key features. Integration of ecotourism with a theme of ruins, creating passive maritime recreation areas along the living levee, fostering aquatic and land habitats, developing nature and the entertainment spaces within the canal district. The master plan invasions three key transformations. Strategic densification, this involves removing lower-value buildings and incorporating extensive green spaces, canals, and lagoons. The plan also includes infilling with attraction hubs at strategic locations. Ultimately, the goal is to transform Emeryville from a low-rise, high-density city of industrial scale into a vibrant urban community with walkable waterfront. The interlink framework, the master plan proposes relocating I-80 and the 5-80 inland along the railroad. This will create a comprehensive network of pedestrian, cycling, and the slow traffic, connecting all the destinations, including between inland area and the bay along the waterfront, and also regionally between Emeryville, Berkeley, Oakland, and then San Francisco. A third one would be the reconnect the city with nature. The master plan aims to bring water into the city and extend the city towards the bay. This vision serves to protect the city from sea level rise while integrating the urban environment with its natural waterfront. The goal is to foster ecological and social coherence. These cross-sections of proposed conditions illustrates their design strategies. The first one, the embrace. This strategy focuses on the reuse of Emeryville's flooded areas, establishing marine habitats for shoreline protection and ecotourism, promoting coexistence between people and nature. And the second one, the shield. This strategy involves implementing gradual slopes and tidal marsh vegetation to slow storm surges and absorb floodwaters, providing protection against sea level rise. And the third one would be the adapt. This strategy leads to the creation of a resilient and adaptable urban canal entertainment district. Raised and floating buildings are designed to respond to the projected sea level rise scenario by 2100. This is a very short video clip, show the whole process. Emeryville is a city with industrial past, that buildings came in first, public space and livability came after. Buildings took precedence. In response to the challenges of sea level rise, we are pioneering a new approach of city-making and human inhabitation, a new, a nature-first, resilient approach, a vibrant, reimagined public space where community, nature, and urban living harmoniously coexist. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raghuwir Katthalia, and my project is titled Urban Oar: Rethinking the Construction Industry for 2050. And what I, the scarcity that I identified was looking at the outdated ways in which we make and think of making our cities. And I think this is encapsulated by this one incident that took place in the recent past, where we saw the precarity of the global supply chain when ship-carrying cargo got stuck in the Suez Canal, bringing the whole supply chain to a standstill and bringing, affecting the whole global economy. And the global supply chain also has issues of negative externalities and extracting from other places. And that's why I'm urging us to rethink how we make and unmake our cities. I found a clue to this when I came to Emeryville. I chanced upon this place called Urban Oar, which made me rethink how I think about cities, and made me realize that cities actually are a deposition of material that calcifies over time, material that comes from other places, lands in the city. And the global supply chain also has issues of negative externalities and extracting from other places. And that's why I'm urging us to rethink how we make and unmake our cities. I found a clue to this when I came to Emeryville. I chanced upon this place called Urban Oar, which made me rethink how I think about cities and made me realize that cities actually are a deposition of material that calcifies over time. Material that comes from other places, lands in the city, and then becomes almost like an ore. But as we know, cities are a work in progress and cities need to be rebuilt and they keep on changing. So my question is, can we think of, rather than getting materials from other places, can we actually retrieve material from the city itself? Can we mine the city? And can there be a place where we can think about other ways of city-making? And I think to rethink that, the idea of what that rethinking would entail would be two sort of aspects. One would be the evolution of the construction industry itself, and the other would be the construction industry and its interface with the city. And I think that Emeryville being in the Bay Area is beneficial because the future of the construction industry is going to be tech. Biotech and biosynthetics, along with robots and so on and so forth, are going to be the future of the construction industry. But right now, all of these actors are sort of pushing the boundaries of the construction industry, but there's no one place where they're coming together to look at it collectively. And I think for, to rethink how we make and unmake our cities, what has to happen is not only a change in the industry, but change in attitudes, which means that it must percolate down to the level of everyday lives, the way we lead our everyday lives, and cultures must be informed. So can there be a sort of different interface between the city and the construction industry? And so I propose a construction campus. And I, as we know, the city of Emeryville, the basis of the city was to, as an industrial hub, where basically things that make up cities were made, and that was the basis of the city. But then deindustrialization took place and produced a lot of vacancy. And so this is, this map kind of shows the extent of how much of the city was dedicated to industrial use, and that's part of the reason why it was redlined. And then now, how, there's only industry in one corner as per the new land use map. So how does one look at this sort of, it produced, that deindustrialization produced a post-industrial landscape, and that landscape is mainly constituted by these sheds. And given, in comparison to other cities, the city of Emeryville has a lot of sheds. And sheds have a particular kind of architecture which allow for material retrieve, and they allow for ways in which they can be undone systematically. And I think the idea of reclaiming and unsealing the land and reclaiming land from a building has already, or from infrastructure has already happened in Emeryville, where you have the precedent of the Greenway, where there used to be railway tracks, and they were taken off and a public space was created. So can that, can a similar process be done to create a different kind of public realm with the sheds? And so can the shed go from being like this to this, where there is open space provided, along with the fact that there's an interface between all the new research that'll be happening with the construction industry, and people can actually go and witness it in this construction campus? And so looking at the process of reclamation, this is how I organized the campus. I looked at, my site was between 66th Street and Ashby Avenue. And so the first thing I did was I unsealed the land from this part to that part, extending the Greenway, and then creating a buffer along the railway, railway tracks. And then I said, can we extend that into sort of the built fabric by unsealing parts of the sheds and create this other public realm? And then I made a core in the center. And I said, can we, can there be greater porosity in this direction? And this is a pedestrian network that I proposed. So this will all be a pedestrian campus, except that one road going through with forms of micro-mobility. So I created a bus stop. So now the bus will stop there. There'll be a place we can get micro-mobility. It'll also be a place where there'll be a material bank, where there's a catalog of all of these sheds and you can basically go and buy things from that, like an online library, an annex to the city council, and a material museum. And then I divided my program into three main components. One was looking at infrastructure, skills in technology, and culture and lifestyle. And basically, I created program related to these three aspects of reimagining the construction industry. And that is kind of what I'm imagining as a campus, which is a continuous work in progress, because that's what's happening to the city of Emeryville, is transitioning. And so this is just some example of what those spaces might look like. So this is what the extension of the Greenway might look like. This is what it looks like today. Maybe it'll become like this. Another example is this, like this is a yard that's there. It might become a place like this, where basically there'll be a factory that processes the debris of bricks. You get clay, and there's an artist residency where artists use that clay from the debris brick, and they take classes for kids. And then I looked at, I did a sort of test and I, to demonstrate that this is possible, I looked at one sort of shed, looked at its components and how one may be able to convert it into a bridge. So I would like to end my presentation by saying that I think it's Emeryville's historical basis and historical narrative, which can be taken forward to address much larger global questions of how cities should be made. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Devyani Jain, and I'll be taking you through my project titled "From Ephemeral to Eternal: Reimagining Emeryville's Coastline." So Emeryville has a total area of about two square miles, out of which approximately 40% is water. When I say this, you probably think that the city lives in great harmony with its waterfront and really embraces it, but in reality, that's not true. Despite its expansive four-mile-long coastline, most of the city is alienated from its waterfront due to the heavy infrastructure of Interstate 80, causing both a physical and visual barrier to the city. This is the only access point for pedestrians to actually access the marina, which is very challenging and underwhelming. And this is what the existing condition of the marina looks like. There's some biotech buildings, an exclusive Watergate community apartments, iconic Radoviks, a marina, and of course, the Emeryville Crescent. But most of the marina is really exclusive, and there are not really a lot of active uses to engage people to this waterfront. Much like the rest of the Bay Area, Emeryville is also facing the threat of coastal inundation and liquefaction by the year 2100. This city will actually be faced, much like the rest of the Bay Area, the San Francisco Bay is expected to rise by two to 10 feet, and the first area to be affected and go underwater would be Emeryville Crescent. Emeryville Crescent is actually a breeding habitat for many endangered wildlife species, and that must be protected at all costs. So this actually poses a big challenge, but also an opportunity to radically re-envision the waterfront using resilient solutions. I'm looking at three strategies. The first would be protecting the city and the marina against sea level rise by creating a levee, by raising the level of the land and embedding Interstate 80 within it. So this is just a section to show you how it would look like. On top is the existing section, and the envisioned section would have the Interstate 80 and Amtrak embedded within the levee. The second strategy would be harnessing the potential offered by the coastline. This would mean building high-density mixed-use development that would help offset the cost of all this fill. And the third would be strengthening the transportation links by creating a ferry terminal and connecting Emeryville better with the rest of the bay and creating a direct connection to the Emeryville Transit Center. One of the key aspects of the protection strategy is actually creating a horizontal levee for restoring Emeryville Crescent. What that essentially is, that it's a nature-based solution to stop sea level rise, and we use nature-based solutions like native plants, like eelgrass and Olympia oysters, that actually were native to Emeryville, especially around the Bay Street where shell mounds were found. And over the years, Olympia oysters have depleted to a major extent. So these days, there have been attempts to use them in a horizontal levee that can be anchored in the mud, tidal mud flat, and they act as a first means of defense against sea level rise. So this is what the design looks like. I started by creating a primary boulevard that would actually lead you to the ferry terminal and on the other hand, connect to the Powell Street and the existing transit center in Emeryville. The idea is to have a peripheral walkway, which is a waterfront promenade that creates spaces for people to actually engage with water and that connects to the existing Bay Trail. You would also see that the open plazas and open public spaces are oriented to get better views of the bay so that people can engage better with water. Even the built mass is decided and designed in such a way that the ferry terminal is a gateway to the city, and just when one enters the ferry terminal and around it is all the entertainment area. So the idea of Emeryville being a rotten city that has kind of been lost over the years, I'm trying to bring that back by creating a casino, rooftop oyster bar, and having these entertainment uses that would actually engage and want people to be here. This is what the site and the design would look like. This is the overall scheme, and the ecological park is actually something that I've designed. It's the first means of defense against sea level rise. And what you also see in pink is a pedestrian and bicycle trail that is going to be running all across the horizontal levee to be exposing people to this marsh that has been neglected from the city. There's the Marina Harbor, and people can park their boats and actually have a picnic in the park next to it. There's the ferry terminal and all of the entertainment areas around it. And an oyster jetty that is going to give you views of San Francisco City and being a breakwater. I'll just take you through some experiences that I tried to create with this design. This is a view of the waterfront promenade and what that would essentially look like. There would be shaded waterfront walkways and views of the city, San Francisco City behind. This is a view of the marsh trail, and people can actually be exposed to the Olympia oyster reef and be in closer proximity to nature and the horizontal levee. There would be people kayaking in a birdwatching tower. And this is a view of the oyster jetty. This is what it would look like. The idea is to create more spaces for people to engage with water and giving more precedence to cyclists and pedestrians to actually be able to move around. This is a view of the ferry terminal plaza, and this is what it is envisioned to be. Yeah, so some key takeaways from this project. The need is to radically transform Emeryville's coastline, and that would mean an adaptation strategy for protection against sea level rise, harnessing the potential that is offered by the coastline and strengthening transportation links by creating a ferry terminal. Thank you.
So are you ready to implement these ideas? So this is just a small sampling of many, many wonderful ideas that you can see out on the boards there. And we also have students here who studied the idea of memory and making that visible in the city, creating a city that prioritizes indigenous and Native American history and culture, and then also the creation of an age-friendly city. How do you make a city that's friendly for seniors and all generations? So I'll ask the four students to come back up here and happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you all for your presentations and all the interesting ideas. It's really, it's really great to hear this. Can I just open this up for questions and we'll just move from one side to the other? So Commissioner Martinez?
I just want to start with saying how impressed I am by all of these presentations and especially the artistic renderings really bring to life these ideas. It's very, very nice to see. We live in such a small city, so it's, to get this much attention paid to all these spaces that we all know very, very well, it feels really nice. It, in all of these presentations, I didn't, which is a good thing to me, I didn't see cars being prioritized in your future visions of Emeryville, and I definitely appreciate that. I do want to, and this is for any of you who wish to answer, talk about what you envision transportation and ways of people getting around through your project.
Hi. So a lot of projects in our class actually envisioned on creating a ferry terminal, especially ones that were working with the marina, and also strengthening transportation links by having alternate modes of transport. So we were really impressed to see that there's a shuttle service that runs Emery Go Stop on the marina, and that's unlike something we've seen here. So we felt that was a great inspiration to draw from and have other means of transit and not have dependency on cars and have that connect to other modes of transit.
I think another thing, we were actually quite impressed with, like my partners, we were impressed with Emeryville's kind of different types of transport and how linked the city was. We were also looking at ways to kind of capitalize on that, which is why we ended up proposing developments around, like around public transit to kind of make that a more, nicer place for people to live around. That was one of our ways of thinking about transport.
Yeah, one alternative we are exploring was relocating the high-speed transportation and then free up the waterfront to multi-mode mobility pedestrians cycling system. So it's more of a strategic planning of high-speed transportation versus the slow traffic.
Yeah, I feel because the city fabric arises from an industrial past, the blocks, because they're large buildings, instead of like many small houses, they're large buildings with large footprints, the industrial sheds. So there is an opportunity for greater pedestrianization and breaking the block size down. So you can create more shortcuts, I think, because that's possible and because the fabric is like that.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Very impressive. I note that in the second presentation, where I live was gone, but in the fourth, fourth presentation, it's still there. So I'm glad, glad to see that. On the, I thought the first presentation was very interesting with the jobs versus residents issue. I wondered whether you did any historical research in terms of how that has changed and when it was an industrial city was, were there a lot of people? Of course, there weren't very many residents in Emeryville at that time. Probably like 2,000, I would imagine, or something like that. But did you see, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I did actually do that research, that when did this shift become so drastic? And I think that's also where the key of the manufacturing came from, because that's what the city employed, like when it developed and when it was this kind of industrial city, is that it employed these people and then they could stay. And I think when that industry went away, what the city wasn't able to do was create other jobs for those people. So the people went away. And like, one of the themes that came up was that right now, a lot of these workers are in biotech, and they don't live in Emeryville because that's not the idea of where they want to be. And there were issues of even looking at, like why this was a problem. This came up in our conversations with Miru as well, where she was saying, we want people who stay in the city, who don't leave after two years. And that's what happened. Like when you privilege, that type of worker was single, probably not married, shifting jobs every two, three years, they're not going to stay in the city unless you create different types of jobs. And which is why I noticed that historically, the shift happened when the industry left. And so I was proposing reinventing that industry, but tweaking it so that those jobs would come back.
Thank you so much for the presentations. I am also extremely impressed, both with the graphic design and also with the ideas. And I think a lot about climate change in my day job, and a lot of it is gloom and doom. And this was not gloom and doom. I mean, there's an element of it there, but I really, I felt the abundance coming out. So, so thank you. One question I have, of many. If you looked forward to, say, 2100, and we were implementing your ideas, your scenarios, what steps do you wish that we had taken on the Planning Commission in 2024 that would have prepared you better to implement those ideas in 2100?
Starting with public space, green infrastructure, really working with ecosystem. It's a new way of coexistence between human and the ecosystem.
way of coexistence between human and the ecosystem. It's very different from the old way of buildings comes first. It really should be the open space system, infrastructure, everything, all of this, and also major consideration of the whole ecosystem from the whole region, the Bay Trail, the Temescal, the watershed, all of this considered first, then development comes after, somehow make a coherent of social and economic.
Any other responses?
Maybe I think if there is a system which is there maybe of cataloging, or a system should be developed for looking at how all the material that is coming out of the city when buildings get demolished, so some way of sort of planning for that and what happens with that material and cataloging it and creating sort of digital archive or something so that that material can be reused in the future. So if there is some, means greater attention to what to do with this material that comes out of, when you do demolition, if there's sort of a way of thinking of a system.
I think another interesting thing, like, for us, the project was really liberating because we were thinking of like the most kind of courageous ideas that might not necessarily be the most realistic thing to do, or the reasonable thing to do. But I think Emeryville's amazing in the sense that the scale of the city is the perfect scale to experiment and not kind of do something revolutionary, which is why a lot of our projects also propose things that are not kind of everyday-ish decisions. So I think it's a really great city, like, the size of the city is what makes it good to experiment on.
I think I completely agree with what my partners said, and I also feel that, like, issues like climate change and these, so this is not something Emeryville as a city can individually implement. And that is something that Miru had talked about, that the problem was that there's no discussion about it. So our idea was to, even if it's very radical, and we're proposing this idea, there's hope to open up a dialogue about this with the Planning Commission and something that can be worked out as a comprehensive strategy for the entire bay. So at least to get this conversation going.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Some really brilliant work. And I guess I'd like to start, actually, that's not a question, that's for later. Okay, so going down the line, first of all, Nupur, I want to express appreciation for the aesthetic on your slides. I know that all of you have some, like, collage building that just goes into your education, and some of you clearly enjoy it more than others. I think I'm one of the others, but I appreciate good collage work. Oh, okay, so when you were looking at the imbalance in jobs, and you were thinking about how to bring the working class of Emeryville to a point where they can actually work here, obviously, that's not happening a lot. You focused on manufacturing, but did you think about service industry workers in your evaluation?
So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, you meant services?
Service industry workers, like restaurants.
Yes, I did, I did, actually. So I, the reason I picked manufacturing, one was because I was trying to create more jobs. So I was looking at which industry creates the most number of jobs. And then I was trying to create jobs for people who don't necessarily have to be educated. I was also trying to find a field that would benefit from being close to UC Berkeley. So that's why the kind of, if biotech is manufacturing in Emeryville, they would benefit, they would upscale those workers. But I did look at the question of, like, people who work in kind of restaurants or in other, other service providers. I was looking at it more through the lens of small businesses, so people who work in businesses that are unique to Emeryville. And yeah, it was kind of about proposing those two things. And on this, when I was looking at people who are already employed in Emeryville, the focus of the project for them would be to give them housing options. So I realized that was also an issue, that people who even worked here, it's not, they couldn't, either couldn't afford to be here, or housing was too far away, or it was, it just didn't make sense with their type of job. So one aspect was to create new jobs, but the other aspect was to give housing to the workers who don't have access to housing in Emeryville today.
Thank you. Let's see, Yi. If you're going to approach urbanism from an environmental perspective, occasionally you do have to say things that people don't necessarily want to hear, and I appreciate that you were willing to base your entire presentation on us flooding a significant portion of our already fairly small city. I think that that is both bold and honest from your perspective. Whether Emeryville attempts to embrace or build above it, I don't know, it's a long way away. I don't expect to have any influence here by the time those decisions are made, but I think the conversations always have to be had, and usually, people don't want to be the one to start that conversation because it's unpleasant. Yeah, I thought it was really good analysis, but that's a comment. Anyway, okay, so on urban or, I noticed there's Jordi on one of the slides, was there a Jordi La Forge, is there a particular? Never mind. Okay, that's more comments. Let's see, Daviani. I don't actually have any questions for Daviani, I do have some comments later. I do want to ask y'all one question, if any of you want to answer. In some professions, people will ask the new people a lot, like, oh, why did you start this? Y'all are a few years into what I understand to be a fairly grueling educational process. I would be interested in knowing what motivates you now to stay in it. If none of you want to answer, that's okay.
I think, so I'm an, I was, I am an architect. I was trained as an architect initially, and then I was interested in urban design because I think, like, we make our cities, and they're so amazing, and there's so many issues to look at and how they all interconnect to each other. And I think the impact of the work we do is monumental, and it's so much more than one building, because we're changing, like, we get to have a say in how the spaces that we inhabit work, and I think that's really powerful.
All right, that is it for my questions, Chair.
One little thing I would add is, I myself, I started with architecture, and then city planning, and then landscape architecture. I'm practicing landscape architect, and now urban design. So the design is really not one profession, it's a interdisciplinary and dynamic involving not only designers, but also the greater community, a whole wide range of invoice. That's what we learned actually from the Urban Design Program, and working on this project, it's really fascinating, the process itself, lots of ideas coming. Yeah, that's really keeping us going on.
Okay, anyone else?
I think that that covers it all, and I hope people answered your questions.
All right, that's it.
Okay, I'll just say, these are all very interesting presentations. I really appreciate your bringing that to us, and it was interesting also the way the different topics that you all chose kind of interplay with each other, the economy that you're thinking about, and the balance of workers and economic balance, and manufacturing, how you take that, and the changing physical environment, and environmentally sound use of materials, these are all really, those are important things. And I know you've probably been really focused on envisioning that, and it's very, these are good ideas. I'm just curious as to whether or not you've come up with any ideas while thinking about this, just like, in terms of political and social change, because clearly, these aren't things that are going to just pop up, we're not going to have a developer come in here and say, I want to do this. What do you see is, it kind of also builds a little on what Commissioner Chaff asked, but what do you see as social things that might develop, or changes in society, or political things, that might lead towards making the things like this more likely to occur? That's probably more thoughts on that than actual answers, but I was wondering if you thought about it.
Well, I, we were exploring what's really the new social solution or social space. One value we were really amazed into is, Ecospace is a new social space, it's an alternative way to bring people together, create a public space, public room, that's inclusive, and also working with, really, the city-making itself. So, instead of only the developments first, and this way, that's a common, a common space, common system, and also solve the social issues as well. So that's what, that's our angle to address that.
I wanted to add that, at least with the Marina, I felt that my interaction there, the Watergate community and some of the users there, I felt were more exclusive. So by creating an atmospheric environment with public spaces and plazas that are facing the bay and that kind, breaking the barrier of Interstate 80, and having a seamless connection from the city would really make the waterfront more accessible to everyone and really help in bridging that gap that exists.
In terms of social change, I think people are becoming more and more sort of, the population, there's a growing population of people who are in transit and keep on moving and changing places, and with the younger crowd being there, I think so, the idea of how we share things when you're only living for a short period of time in one place, how much do you hold on to, like materially, how many things you buy, and how many things you share, like furniture in your house, and so on and so forth? So the way we share the built environment, I think, is going to change, given the sort of trend in the way, the fact that housing costs are very high, and I think more people are opening up to the idea of, like, shared or cooperative living, and that also entails how we share sort of, like, building materials and things like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I was looking at really complicated issues of, like, racial inequality and things like that, because that's why the jobs are not, like, diverse, because they're only hiring people who are mostly, like, the average worker in Emeryville is white, and has probably graduated from some college nearby. And I don't necessarily know if we can kind of transform social change, but I think even if we start thinking about, like, things of the economy and how that might work based on who gets to work, and we know that, like, issues of racial inequality get worse in large cities, as the denser a city becomes, the larger its size it becomes, but Emeryville doesn't have that issue, it's not a large, really large city. So I think it's perhaps, it's very well-suited to employ this sort of equitable employment approach towards the city, because I think some things really work in its favor just intensively because of the nature of the city.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any more questions or comments at this point? Okay, well, thank you all, it's really, we're often responding to market forces and the different choices that we're making here, and to get kind of a bigger picture, ideas
of interest a little bit ahead, but now, as we move to public hearings, I will reiterate
is really refreshing, it's invigorating, and hopefully, we get to apply some of the ideas you've brought to us today.
that I'm recusing myself due to conflict of interest to my employer from the first item,
But thank you all very much, I really, really appreciate it.
Chair Gisone, if I may, request a small break so we can take some pictures with the students, if that's okay?
and that will, and since Vice Chair Dram is not here, we will need to select a person Yeah. to take over Vice Chair or Chair, and since I'm recusing myself, I won't be part of that discussion either, so I'm going to go out and look at the exhibits in the hall, and I'll come back when you call me back for the last item. Anyway, thank you very much. I'll leave these notes here for whoever wants to use the cheat sheet.
All right, we need you to select a chair, interim chair for this item. I would, yeah. I see a nomination for Commissioner Chaff. I'll call, yeah, okay, there we go, this is second by Commissioner Wax. I'll call the role, Commissioner Chaff.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent, Chair Gisone is recused. Welcome to your reign.
All right. So pleased to be here. Okay, we are now going to open public hearing 8.1, which is Total Wine &amp; More Retail Store. Let me just check that there are no conflicts of interest to announce on this. Nope, okay, then can I please have the staff presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. A bit of a tough act to follow. I'll be presenting tonight on the Total Wine &amp; More Retail Store proposed at 3938 Horton Street. This is for a major conditional use permit. So this is the project location, 3938 Horton Street is that building at 40th and Horton Street. It has been previously occupied by other kind of large retail stores, such as Decathlon Sporting Goods, Toys R Us, and it is, the building sits across two pretty irregularly-shaped parcels, the north of which is in Emeryville, and the south of which is in Oakland. So Emeryville does perform a design review and any planning approvals for this project. All right. So this is just looking at the entrance to that building, facing that parking lot, and then from the intersection of 40th and Horton Street. So the proposed Total &amp; Wine &amp; More Retail Store would occupy about 25,000 square feet of that existing building, which is around 29,600 square feet in total. It is considered to be a retail liquor sales use. They would be doing retail sale of wine, beer, and spirits, as well as accessory beer and wine tasting, and educational classes. Retail liquor sales are considered a use of special concern in the planning code and therefore require a major conditional use permit. Their hours of operation would be from eight to 10 on Monday and Saturday, and eight to nine on Sundays. They anticipate deliveries up to nine times per week, and would be using the existing loading dock that is at the building. They have not proposed any exterior changes as part of this permit review, and if they do propose any exterior changes, including signage, they would require a design review at that time. So here-
So this is the project location, 3938 Horton Street is that building at 40th and Horton Street. It has been previously occupied by other kind of large retail stores, such as Decathlon Sporting Goods, Toys R Us. And it is, the building sits across two pretty irregularly shaped parcels, the north of which is in Emeryville and the south of which is in Oakland. So Emeryville does perform a design review and any planning approvals for this project. So this is just looking at the entrance to that building facing that parking lot. And then from the intersection of 40th and Horton Street. So the proposed Total and Wine and More Retail Store would occupy about 25,000 square feet of that existing building, which is around 29,600 square feet in total. It is considered to be a retail liquor sales use. They would be doing retail sale of wine, beer and spirits, as well as accessory beer and wine tasting and educational classes. Retail liquor sales are considered a use of special concern in the planning code and therefore require a major conditional use permit. Their hours of operation would be from eight to 10 on Monday and Saturday and eight to nine on Sundays. They anticipate deliveries up to nine times per week and would be using the existing loading dock that is at the building. They have not proposed any exterior changes as part of this permit review. And if they do propose any exterior changes, including signage, they would require a design review at that time. So here is the internal tenant improvements they're proposing. You can see in that kind of northern portion of the building, they've proposed a separate 888 square foot classroom area. And then towards the center of the store, they would have a wine sampling area and a beer sampling area that would be clearly demarcated from the rest of the store and ID'd for anyone who enters those areas. In terms of other permitting, this business does require multiple licenses from the ABC. So it requires the type one, or sorry, type 21, which is for retail sale of beer, wine and spirits for off-site consumption. Type 42, which is for onsite consumption of beer and wine and would be used exclusively for tastings occurring onsite. And then type 86, which is for instructional tastings associated with educational classes. They do need a finding of public convenience or necessity for both the type 21 and type 42 licenses. And pending planning commission's review and approval of this conditional use permit, that request will be considered by City Council on May 21st. So it is in the mixed use with residential zoning district, as well as the regional retail overlay and the pedestrian priority zone. They do not propose any expansion to the existing building footprint or design. So there are no changes in floor area ratio or building height. They will not be providing any additional parking and those two parcels that the building sits on have an existing surface parking lot with approximately 244 spaces and those will be maintained as is. They are required to apply, provide eight short-term and eight long-term bicycle parking spaces, which will be considered by draft condition of approval B1. And they will also be maintaining 10 existing short-term racks located directly outside the entrance to the building. So the findings for a major conditional use permit are as follows. It must be consistent with the general plan. The project must be compatible with the surrounding area. It must be consistent with the capability of the water supply, wastewater disposal, fire and police systems. It must contribute to the general well-being of the surrounding community. It must comply with the planning regulations. So the proposed use will establish a new retail store that occupies an existing vacant building, create new opportunities for employment and support economic activity in a key commercial area of the city, and it will fulfill a number of goals and policies in the general plan. It will also be a scale and character of retail use that is compatible with the existing uses in the East Bay Bridge Center and will not pose a burden on existing facilities because it will be occupying an existing building. The project does comply with applicable planning regulations and the conditions of approval will ensure that building or bicycle requirements and performance standards will be met. You can refer to the staff report for the full language for those findings and this discussion thereof. So staff's recommendation is that planning commission does approve this conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Steve Rawlings, the applicant for this project should be available on Zoom and would like to make a brief presentation. Then we also have Phil Armstrong and Katrine Hunsing from Total Wine and More available, I believe, on the call if you have any questions for them.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any clarifying questions for staff from Commissioners? Yes, go ahead.
Just one, thank you. I could see from the plan set that the existing bollards and at the entrance are to remain. Can you just confirm for us, Alyssa, that they would need design review if they get removed?
That is correct. And from the applicant, I, they have confirmed that they will be retaining those bollards.
Great, thank you.
Maybe this is a question better addressed to the applicant, but I'm wondering about the rest of the building that's not being proposed to be used. What, what is that?
So I, I'm not aware of what potential other tenant may occupy that space. I believe that's something that the property owner is intending to do to split the space.
I had one question and again, this might go to the applicant, but on this diagram here, where would the short, no, the, sorry, there's short-term bike parking that's being added. My understanding was there's something inside the store. Is that right?
There, there may be the, so short-term parking is currently located, there's actually, I believe, 12 or 14 bike racks, short-term bike racks located just right here outside the store entrance. And they'll be replacing the required number of them with bicycle racks that meet our standards better. And then in terms of long-term, they have not proposed an exact location, but it will be reviewed through the conditions of approval to make sure it meets the planning requirements.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Then we'd like to have the applicant's presentation.
Terrific. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Rawlings. I am a consultant working with Total Wine and More. I assist them with permits necessary to open their stores throughout the state of California. And as was mentioned earlier, joining me this evening is Catherine Hudson-Ger. She is the Vice President of Real Estate. And it also is Philip Armstrong, who is the Director of Real Estate for Total Wine and More. Just for the record, we do concur with the staff's recommendation and their findings. And we do agree to all of the condition, draft conditions that are presented to you this evening. I, I have a short presentation. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Total Wine and More, but I brought some pictures. So hopefully this will familiarize you if you have not had an opportunity to visit a store yet. So hang in there with me for just a minute. Full screen. There we go. Terrific. Just to let you know that they are, you know, Total Wine and More is very excited to be here. It does take a little bit of time to open each and every store. They are projecting to be able to open early next year. And it always, is always worth saying that there's going to be a significant investment into a space that currently isn't occupied. And I think that when you see the, the pictures of the inside, you'll, you'll understand that they, they spare no detail when it comes to, you know, their store presentation and merchandising. Here's a couple of, just kind of some quick facts about Total Wine and More. The, you know, there are about 275 stores across the United States. There are currently 41 here in the state of California. I believe that the closest Total Wine and More to this, to your community would be out in Pleasant Hill. There's also stores in San Ramon, Pleasant 10 as well. This would, and then there's a store in San Francisco. This would be the first store in this, this, this kind of immediate East Bay area. The stores are very well merchandised. There, there's like 8,000 different types of wines in each and every store. I'd like to point out that Total Wine and More is, is, is a bit of a destination type of retailer. You'll, you will find that there will be people from neighboring cities like Berkeley, Oakland, Pinole, that will be coming to this store and shopping because of just the, the large variety of products that they have that are really hard to find in say, an average grocery store. The next few slides are simply going to be just kind of give you an idea of what an interior of the store looks like. This particular photo here highlights a tasting area. Now, within the store, there's going to be a, an area that is dedicated toward beer tasting and then a second area that's going to be dedicated toward wine tasting. And again, these are opportunities for people to have samples of maybe new products that are being promoted. These types of tastings are highly controlled. You're only getting about a one ounce sample when you do come for a tasting, when there is tasting there. A lot of times the tastings are occurring on weekends and they are usually some type of craft brewer or a specialty wine that Total Wine might be featuring. Again, this is just some of the way that the merchandising takes place. There are some refrigerated coolers that do carry some refrigerated product, but by and large, most of the product is in shelves. We do carry very popular brands. Somebody might be familiar with the Skinny Girl brand, but we also carry a lot of very, very hard to find products as well. I'll stop here at this particular slide. I know that Alyssa had mentioned that there is a classroom. We call these our wine education centers and they are designed somewhat as a classroom. And they are an actual class that you actually have to sign up for online. They are designed to hold about 30 to 40 people. And each of these classes has somewhat of a theme. Like for example, they might have a, an evening where they're going to be talking about wines from Tuscany in Italy. So the class is more than just sampling some wine. It's going to talk to you about the region, the types of grapes that are being grown there, some of the, the wineries that have been there. So it's a bit of a history lesson, as well as getting into a lot of the intricacies about the, the grapes and their, and their process for making their wines. During these classes, you'll get an opportunity to sample maybe four of different wines. The classes usually are hour to an hour and a half long and they are usually in the evenings. They're very, very popular. They're held about once a month in, in most locations. The schedule does vary from store to store, but about once a month is, is a typical schedule. Again, some, some merchandising photos here for you. And that actually kind of concludes the, the slideshow there. So, you know, with that, Total Wine and More is, you know, very happy, excited to be here. We feel like this is a really good fit for the target audience that, that we're looking to get to. Some people that are very discerning about the types of products that they want to have. And with that, I'll conclude my comments and thank you for, again, for the opportunity to present. And I'm available for any questions as well as Phil and Catherine.
Thank you, Steve. I'll look to the Commissioners here. Anybody have a question for the applicants? Yes, go ahead.
To what extent does, do, do your stores do curbside or engage with delivery services?
I think that Phil might be better equipped to answer what our delivery services and policies are.
Yeah, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So yeah, we, we do offer curbside service and delivery is also part of it. I think as a percentage of sales, delivery is around 10%. And curbside, you know, we, we offer it and it's again, an important part of our business model.
Okay. So this classroom, thank you. This classroom, I hear it's going to be used once a month? Is that?
It's used, yeah, for, for public held classes. It could be once, sometimes twice a month. The store team does use it for meetings and kind of other internal tastings. So a lot of, a lot of what Total Wine does is a lot of education for our staff. And so the, the room is also used for, for meetings, for product sampling, for understand, you know, different company policies and techniques and, and just used internally as well.
I see. So it's used as a classroom occasionally and then it's used as a meeting room. A lot of the other times are for training, et cetera. All right. That makes sense.
Correct.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll say thank you again and we will move on to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 7:51. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, you'll have three minutes. Do we have anyone, do we have any speaker cards? I don't see anyone in the audience.
We did, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, great. Then I will close the public hearing at 7:52. And we will now bring that item back for deliberation. Would anybody like to go first to share their thoughts and opinions?
I'm comfortable making the findings recommended by staff.
As am I. I, it seems like a, quite a reasonable, quite a good enterprise frankly, and in a, a good addition to the, to that shopping area.
So the only real comment I want to make is that this, to me, this is just a little bit of bad news along with pretty good news. This looks like an excellent addition to our retail profile here. I, I do have a friend who I've been friends with for about 10 years, who is finally moving to Emeryville. And one of the questions he had for me as a non-drinker is like, where do I get all my fancy wines? And so like this, this is going to be great for people in our community. I do understand that it's going to draw people from all over. The, the bad news that comes with it is with this major investment in what will probably like be here for a long time. This is an area where we would like, you know, it's in the general plan. We'd like to see this more urbanized over time. And I don't know if that's ever going to be compatible with like this project or not. And that's unfortunate because it is like increasingly proximal to the areas of the city that have like reached that, that next level and, and passed on beyond our like sort of low-lying industrial and vast parking lots bit. And certainly this store is one that is absolutely compatible with a more urbanized, big box environment. But all the same, that's not really any reason to stop the tenant from coming in. And I think that, yeah, I have no reason to vote against this.
Great, thank you. I just, I actually have one question for staff based on the comment that you made Commissioner Wax earlier about, or the question that you had around delivery and pickup. Is there any discussion of the sort of layout in the parking lot and how that might be changed as a result of there being a need for short-term parking and you know, sort of quick transactions with the store?
That's a good question. That is not something that has come up in discussion or something that Total Wine and More has proposed for the surface parking area.
Okay. And when, when would that discussion happen? Is that now or is there another opportunity after the discussion tonight where that would be more appropriate?
I mean, I would say that now would be a good time to have a discussion if you have comments on that or revisions you would like to make to the conditions.
I think the main, the main thing I'm thinking about with this, and I'm curious what other Commissioners think, is that, you know, I saw that the bike parking is right at the front of the store. So you kind of come in the driveway and then head that direction. If there are a lot of cars circulating that are doing pickups, you know, for curbside pickup or for a delivery, delivery drivers coming in and out, then it would be prudent to reduce conflict between those two user groups. I don't have much of a proposal about how exactly to do that, but go ahead, Commissioner Martinez.
I kind of in line with that. And again, this isn't, this is not any addition to the conditions of approval. I just want to impress upon the applicant our plans for 40th Street and for a bus-only lane and for protected bike lanes so that they, they know when they're coming in as they're creating that flow and that design, that there will be pedestrians. They will, there will be people on foot. There will be people who are coming by bus through that area. And we intend to, as a city, make those paths safe and comfortable for those folks and de-prioritize the cars that are traveling along 40th Street. Although there will be cars certainly and this parking lot will well accommodate them. Yes, if, if you could have an eye towards reducing those conflicts and prioritizing the comfort and experience of those who are not in cars. That's definitely something the city would want you to understand about our future plans.
That is a great point. And also just to add that we have a lot of new residents that live just blocks away from that. And the, the recently opened apartment buildings would likely also be walking or biking there. So perhaps one thing we could think about also is the connection to the sidewalk and how one moves from the sidewalk either on, I think it's, is it Horton there? And 40th into the store most efficiently and safely. Does that give staff enough direction to consider? I don't, yeah, okay. All right.
The good news is that that parking lot is not always full.
So, uh, it should, I mean, we should be able to work with the applicant to come up with a scheme that works for everybody, both the city and the applicant.
That's great, and I, I really view this as a good opportunity because we're thinking about these uses. We have a new opportunity to imagine what it would look like best, you know, what would be the best configuration for everyone, so, um, good. Okay.
I move to approve the CUP.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion by Commissioner Haney, seconded by Commissioner Martinez to approve the conditional use permit, I will call the roll. Commissioner Chafe, interim Chair Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent, Chair Gazzoni is recused, and the motion passes.
You forgot me.
I did?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez, I swear I didn't say that. My apologies. Now it passes. Thank you.
And I will now relinquish my duties.
Okay, I'm back, so, next we go into item eight-point-two, auto-centric and personal storage uses, and since this is the public hearing, we start with your presentation or comments. Okay, so we're ready for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Gazzoni and Planning Commission. This is a, uh, public hearing for, uh, a few changes to the planning regulations related to auto-centric users and personal storage users, which were initiated by the council in, at the January study session. Uh, you had a preview of the changes that are being proposed, uh, last month at the March, uh, study session. And really, the purpose of this whole endeavor is to improve public health, safety, and quality of life by deemphasizing certain auto-centric users and personal storage users that are typically land-intensive and are not, uh, considered the highest use for one-square-mile city that we are. It is also to deemphasize the reliance on non-renewable fuel sources for the transportation and to promote alternative energy-related businesses that will be a benefit to the public at large. Uh, as I'd mentioned, the commission reviewed this at, uh, at the planning commission meeting, uh, last month, and was generally supportive of the proposed modifications, questioned the reason for the proportion, uh, for the various prohibitions, and thought that certain users, such as car washes, would be a good use inside an existing garage, and that all, uh, vehicles, including alternative fuel vehicles, uh, require cleaning. Uh, the commission also suggested that the staff carefully evaluate the proposed definition of alternative fuel to ensure that the amendments allow for future non-hydrocarbon-based fuels. So, with that in mind, I'm going to start with the first change, uh, regarding the alternative energy vehicle, uh, definition. This was what was proposed, uh, last, uh, month in March. Uh, I will let you read that, and, and this is what, uh, we are, proposed staff is proposing now. So that an alternative energy vehicle would refer to a vehicle that is powered and operated using renewable fuels, including electricity stored in fuel cells or batteries, biodiesel, green hydrogen, and other sustainable technologies, excluding vehicles powered by fuels derived from hydrocarbons such as coal, petroleum, and natural gas. So this covers both what it excludes and what, and the other sustainable technologies is hopefully, uh, uh, future-proofing, uh, what we can't imagine will occur. Uh, the other two, uh, changes that are being proposed and which have not changed from, uh, March study session are the use categories for showrooms, uh, and that is for alternative energy vehicle showrooms, and, uh, and a new use category for alternative energy charging stations. And the idea here is to allow, uh, the showrooms, uh, mainly in, uh, MUR, MURS, uh, and industrial zones, whereas the charging stations would be more in areas where there is more commercial activity, so MUR and MURS, uh, zones of the city. And this kind of, uh, the third change is the change to, uh, this table. Uh, it's doing two things. It's prohibiting car washes everywhere in the city, it is prohibiting auto dealerships everywhere in the city, and it is prohibiting any new gas stations, and it's introducing, uh, two new use categories, like I mentioned, alternative energy vehicle showrooms and, uh, charging stations. And it is also prohibiting personal, uh, storage use everywhere in the city, and that's what this table is showing. Uh, as this is a policy change under CEQA, uh, the general rule exemption will be used as no specific project is being approved at this time, it is more of a policy. And our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take, uh, testimony, uh, testimony, uh, from the public, and close the hearing, and then adopt the attached resolution recommending that the city council approve the proposed amendments, uh, to the planning regulations. At this time, uh, uh, this is scheduled for the Jan, uh, the June sixth, uh, city council meeting. Uh, before, that concludes my presentation, but I would want, uh, I would like to acknowledge Anna Pardia. Uh, she is our planning intern and who has done a lot of the research and also the site visits, uh, to various showrooms around the Bay Area to help, uh, inform the commission. So, if you have any questions, I would be happy to, uh, answer.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions? Ms. Haney?
So, the, um, the planning code or the zoning code is prohibiting the future uses. Um, how does it handle existing uses? Does it ever mention existing uses, or, or, can you d- discuss the issue of the fact that the existing uses will continue to be legal?
They will be, they will continue to be legal, and if this ordinance is passes, it, they would be in the category of legal, non-conforming users, which is considered, for all practical purposes, legal. So if there is any kind of damage to these, uh, businesses, uh, there is a threshold of eighty percent, I believe, or seventy-five percent. Uh, if the damage is less than that, uh, then the business is allowed, uh, to reestablish itself. And this is a standard code of non-conformity that we have in our planning regulations, so it doesn't need to be called out, uh, separately.
I see.
Any other questions? Then we move on to public comment on the, um, we go on to, um, the commission for deliberation. Any commissioners have deliberative comments?
Language that we need to approve, please?
You mean the resolution?
Yes.
Um, I do not have the resolution. I mean, uh, are you, were you looking for the findings?
Uh, for the specific language of, I think it would be...
Are you looking for the definitions?
It was one of the two attachments. I think it's not, not the resolution, I think it was the, um, the other document. There were two documents that were attached.
So, the, uh, you, what is attached is the ordinance itself, and the two things that are changing are, A, we are adding a new definition of alternative energy vehicle, which is this, which is, uh, which you can see under revised proposed definition on the screen.
I guess it is in the resolution. So, I would just like to propose a one-word amendment.
Okay.
Which is, it's under whereas the prohibition of auto-centric uses. I would like to add the word "certain" because I noticed throughout your study, you were using the word "certain," which qualifies it and allows for renewable vehicle uses, for example, to be allowed. So I'd like to propose the addition of word "certain" to that line.
I have that noted. Anything else?
So it'd be whereas the prohibition of certain auto-centric uses.
Correct. So it'll be the fifth "whereas's," and it would read the prohibition of certain auto-centric users such as car washes, car, yes, I captured that.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you for going into the definition. I, I'm happy with the language that's being proposed at this time, and thank you also for the background research. It was really useful last time to have some context of what's going on in the wider Bay Area, so, much appreciated.
Okay. So, if there's no further things to be discussed here, do we have a motion to approve this?
With the proposed amendment, I move the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me. On the motion to recommend to the city council to approve the ordinance as proposed with the addition of the word "certain" after the word, after whereas the prohibition, uh, in the fifth recital of the resolution, made by Commissioner Martinez and seconded by Commissioner Chafe, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent. Chair Gazzoni.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to Planning Commissioner's comments.
Commissioner Chafe. Following up on the, uh, community director, development director's report earlier this evening, um, where we discussed, uh, the all-electric, um, reach code repeal, I think it would be helpful at some point to have a short staff report on sort of the, um, status of various things going on in that general world. So, for example, I know, you know, the Air District has some, um, relevant new language that pertains, I think, to, um, furnaces only, and there's many other things going on at the state level, and so my question is, what is, what hole does this leave? Um, and I'd like to, you know, kind of spend a few minutes thinking about that and also just have some background knowledge as we see proposals come into us. Would others be interested in that? Yeah? Okay.
I'm very glad you brought that up because this idea of incentivizing the, um, all-electric use is a good response to that, and I know, as an architect, that, um, when cities had the all-electric codes, we, we obviously had to do it, but developers were incentive, were, well, had to do it, and, um, lacking that, uh, lacking incentives to do it will make a difference. So, I think, uh, I'd recommend that the staff start looking into an incentive code that would, um, make that much more possible to have all-electric.
Okay, um, my only comment is, I think the presentations that we had beginning of the evening were really, really good, and, um, thank you for, Ru, I think you had a lot to do with putting that together, and thank you for that, and, um, if other opportunities like that come up, particularly when we don't have a very full agenda, I would welcome that. Yes, it's an important one. Um, okay, other than that, I think we're ready to adjourn, so we are adjourned at eight-twelve PM. Thank you.